Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to have to call this to order since we have a form of board members here. It's a legal thing. So if you could just give me a minute. I called this meeting of the Divine Independent School Board of Trustees to order at 6:35 PM. Let the record show that a form of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 5, Act 1. Let the record show that trustees Amy Bubenhause and Chris Davis, Renee Frida and Nancy Pepper are present. Thank you.
All right, first we'll start with introductions. Thank you for coming, everybody. As Ms. Pepper said, we've got four board members here with us tonight. She named them. Also guests with us tonight are Ms. Jeanette Dixon. She's our chief appraiser from Medina County. Robert Tiarina from Tiarina Galvan Lawrence Financial Consulting. That is our financial advisor for the district. Rose Kuneski from McCall, Parferson, Horton. That's our bond counsel. And we have several committee members from our facilities committee that are here. Misty Houston, you're on the committee, raise your hand. Shannon, everybody in the back. It's kind of packed, I can't see past everybody. All right, so first we'll start with our town hall PowerPoint that we've been giving. We have shown this to all of our employees have seen this so far. This is what's going to go out on the website. It's available to the community. Anybody that wants to access this, go to our district website. As soon as it pulls up, you'll have a link that has all of the bond information. It takes you right to it. So this whole process started about two and a half years ago when the board had us reach out to Region 13 and start looking at a strategic facilities plan. Region 13 has a partner with Sledge Engineering. They actually have architects, engineers, previous civic workers, construction experts. And the reason that we go through Region 13 instead of Region 20, which is our normal service center, is that Region 13 is the only region center out of the 20 regions that has a product similar to this. So Sledge Engineering came in, came on the campus. They watched lunch, they watched pickup, they watched drop off, looked at all of our mechanical and AC type stuff and gave us suggestions on things that they thought could be addressed through construction projects and whatnot over the next lifespan of the school. So what they devised was a list of all the projects. $32 million of everything that we needed to take into consideration for improvements. After this was completed, it was presented to the board and the board adopts it. The reason that they adopted it is so that we're at a point to where if leadership changes, something happens to me, get run over, whatever, this plan is active and the next person that comes in would be able to take up and run. What we see a lot of times is school districts have new leadership. They start this kind of survey, something happens, new person comes in, they have to start all over. And it's just a continual planning cycle and nothing ever comes to fruition. So after the board adopted the facilities plan, they directed administration to complete a search for a facilities committee. This was comprised of community members, parents, business members, administration and staff from all campuses. The committee put together a survey that we put out for everybody in the public or in the community to reach out and give us their input on the list that we had taken from Sledge and had a chance to narrow that down to come up with priorities. So the survey feedback showed us that priorities should be given in addressing our safety and security for the students and how we could accommodate our growing band program. So after we came up with the list, or the committee came up with the list, superintendent really didn't direct anything, it was just kind of a moderator. The committee came up with a list. Sledge Engineering went back and updated the project scopes and all the planning budgets to accommodate construction costs, adding in retention pieces and contingency amounts for escalation of cost. Because some of these projects, if they were to come to fruition, wouldn't even start for another two years. So the committee recommendations are as follows. At the elementary school, they decided that we needed a new early childhood center, new elementary parking and drop off, some enclosed corridors so that sooner in the next couple of slides you'll be able to see the kiddos will be able to get from one end of the campus to the other without stepping foot outside. Right now, I think our pre-K 3 and pre-K 4, if I remember correctly, one of the teachers said that once they start getting ready, washing hands and start needing to move towards the cafeteria, it takes them about 18 minutes to get there. So miscellaneous campus improvements and a new cafeteria. Cafeteria would not have a kitchen. It would just be a serving and a dining area, which could also double as a meeting facility. So you may not be able to see very well. The red box is where the new early childhood center would be placed. It would take the place of all of our current portable buildings where our kiddos are at. It would also contain the administration offices for the elementary and a secure vestibule so that parents come in to drop off kids or bring lunches or whatever the case may be, would enter into a secure vestibule, then we could figure out how we need to help them take care of their business without granting any access to the whole campus. In the projects for the elementary school, it also includes a gymnasium, which would not be a full-size competition gym. This is what's called a box gym. Right now, our elementary kiddos, some of you may know, they have to walk across to the intermediate school for their physical education classes. We would also be able to address some of the classroom issues. The current offices at the elementary would be turned into new instructional space. Like I said, this would include a dining area, some site security fencing is needing to be addressed and enclosing all corridors, similar to what was done at the kindergarten wing several years back. At the intermediate campus, this would also include creating a modern secure entry vestibule so that when parents show up, we have an area that is contained. Many people may be familiar with what we have at the middle school. It'd be very similar to that. Also miscellaneous improvements, including site security and fencing. This is all detailed on our bond website so that you will be able to get a better picture of what our security issues will be. At the middle school, it would take the current stage area and renovate it to expand our library into a bigger building. We also have a plan for two new locker rooms, one for boys and one for girls. And miscellaneous site improvements and security finishes at the middle school. It will also be renovating two classrooms for updated science labs. And at the high school, my pointer's not working, but if you know where the bus circle is, the current high school administration offices would be moving those down to where the bus circle is, the old cafeteria area, so that they could create a secure entry on the first floor to where parents aren't coming up, where our visitors are not coming up the stairs and have access basically to the entire campus whenever they come in through our front doors. They would renovate the current administration areas into classrooms. We have a big STEM program. Pathways, CTE pathways and college career readiness that are beginning over at the high school. So these classrooms would help accommodate that. This would also be a plan in the high school campus version is to create a new band hall for our expanding band program. Then currently, Mr. Miller said we're at about 134 high school kiddos. The current band hall would be converted into a black box theater and this would hold our theater arts classes and fine arts. Both the band hall and the black box theater would be available to the high school and the middle school. So that's dual access. Special education building, I think we figured out that that's the oldest building in our fleet of buildings. Currently, the space and the amount of workers and the type of work that needs to be done over there, this building is not accommodating for what would be more efficient work for them. So there's two options, either a full remodel of that building or a demolition and build a new existing building. The difference in cost in between those two projects of a full remodel and existing building is about $400,000. So as the engineers and architects get to looking in that situation, they will be able to give us a better idea of how we would move forward with that. If it was a remodel, there would be a 1,500 square foot addition. Some of this is going to be for storage. Remember correctly that our special education records are the only records in school that we have to keep for life. So we have to make sure that we take care of that stuff. Also at the stadium, in the plan from the committee, there were accessibility improvements to the stadium, including sidewalks, pathways, parking and seats. Improvements to the track and the high jump area. Those are not included in the bond. The board is taking that upon themselves to take care of those issues. The only thing that we do have that is in the stadium picture is the addition of four new tennis courts. And this is to accommodate the growing tennis program. It's one of our biggest participation groups. So our stadium, anything that has to do with athletics, we have to pull that out. So that's why you would see on the bond ballot, two different propositions. And this is based on the legislature and what they require of us. Anything that has to do with athletics or stadium-type renovation projects or construction projects, those two have to be separated. So in the end, at the February 16th, 2023 board meeting, the board unanimously approved going out for a bond for $32 million to include two propositions. Those are the two I just got through describing. So as you see, the first proposition is Proposition A. Create secure entry by moving current offices downstairs at the high school. Remodel the current office to classrooms, new band hall and the black box theater. For the middle school, expand the library. Expand boys and girls locker rooms. Repurpose and remodel the current cafeteria and science classrooms. And at the intermediate, be site security, fencing, secure vestibule. And at the elementary school is the early education childhood center and office space, gym and dining area, cafeteria, no kitchen. Also, we're going to enclose all those outside corridors where kiddos will not have, at any time will they be walking outside from one part of the building to another. Special education department would be the renovation or addition or new construction of the special education building. And Proposition B, this is the separate piece, four tennis courts to the existing four that we have. Now, a lot of people keep asking the same question whenever we do these presentations. Say, well, if these are two propositions, if one passes, can the other one fail? And vice versa. These two are independent of each other. Proposition A could pass, Proposition B could fail. They could both fail, they could both pass. They're not dependent on each other. Okay, so a little bit of school finance. So our maintenance and operations taxes, this is what we levy to fund all of our salaries, our materials, buses, tangible things that you can put your hands on. And our interest and sinking fund is levied to fund voter-approved bonds only to pay for renovation or construction. So our M&amp;O budget, say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $18 million. 84% to 87% of that just goes to salaries. So it doesn't leave a lot of room to have funds to do your other things. It's got to be very smart. So over the last three years, the district has been paying down our debt using a cash defecence, which has allowed the district to maintain the INS rate at a level so that the first $11 million of this bond would not generate a tax increase. The year 2018, 19 or 2019, 20, I think our M&amp;O tax rate for Divine NSD was $1.17. And now we're looking at next year probably being at 84 and a half cents, somewhere in there. So that doesn't have anything to do with what has happened here at school. That has to do with the state compressing property taxes. But as you can see, that M&amp;O rate is significantly lower than it was three years ago. So of the $11 million that the bond would not raise the current tax rate, the remaining $20,535,000 of the bond is what the increased tax rate will be based on. So what you can see here is the impact through the daily, monthly and annual taxes of homes. Medina County has a $40,000 homestead exemption for people that own their own homes or they are buying their homes. If you don't recognize those words, please call our office if you need help because they have to file for this exemption. It doesn't automatically come, right? So if you don't think that you recognize what that means, call us and we'll try to help you figure out if you have it. So if you have a home value that's $100,000, your homestead tax exemption is $40,000, so your tax don't $60,000. Your annual increase for every $100,000 of value that you have in your property will be $108. So at $200,000, it's $280. If you break that down, your monthly increase for every $100,000 value is about nine bucks, about 30 cents a day. Some of the reasons that the board decided to move forward right now with the bond election was basically the way the economy works, interest rates and inflation. Construction costs are never going to decrease. The state legislature has many, many mandates that are coming out in terms of how we need to address safety in schools and certain requirements that are going to come into play for us. And also, some of the legislation that is proposed makes bond elections a little more difficult after this coming November than they may be at this time. And we're not sure how that's going to play out. So Election Day is May 6th, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. For Medina County, voting will be at the Medina County Precinct 4 Annex Building down the street. And then for Frio County, it's going to be at the Bigfoot Alternative Center. Early voting is April 24th to the 28th and May 1st to May 2nd and April 29th. So the deadline to register to vote in this election is April 6th, so about three days away. We're also going to have a facilities tour for anybody that's interested. Here's a QR code. You can also find this on our website. This is going to take you to a Google form and you sign up through that electronically. We'll respond back and tell you, hey, you're on the list. What we're going to end up doing is probably try to split it in half to where one time we'll take you to the secondary campuses and special education and the other tour will take you to elementary and intermediate. If you have any questions or you want to reach out to one of us, there is an email address specifically for the bond. And what we're doing is every time we get a question, we've created an FAQ sheet that's on our bond website. We'll address each question individually and then we're going to put the question that you asked, but not your name, put the question that you asked on the webpage so that people that may have similar questions but are scared or don't really want to call or don't want to email it in, they'll be able to see these answers. This QR code goes to our bond website. But if you choose not to use QR codes or it's not something that you're familiar with or handy with, if you go to the school website, our homepage, as soon as you open it up, there's going to be a tab for bond information. And that is the presentation that I have for the town hall meeting. We asked Ms. Jeanette Dixon to come so that she could maybe explain the tax rate and the tax freeze for our 65 and over a little bit better. So I'm going to let her talk for about, as long as you need to talk. As long as you need to talk.
So basically, anyone that turns 65, the year that they turn 65, the taxes they pay for the school will be the maximum they pay. The values can go up, they'll never pay more than that. The values can come down and they'll pay less, but they will never pay more than the tax they pay that first year when they turn 65. So the people that are already 65 really won't affect them much because of the fact that there are freezes in place. As long as they have a fight.
Well, as long as they don't add on to it, it just doesn't affect. They add on to their home, then that value would be, or if they do something, remodeling doesn't affect it, just if there's a new structure put to it, then the freeze can go up a little bit based on what they add to it. But other than that, the property stays the same, the taxes will never go up.
And they can apply for that the year they turn?
As soon as they turn 65.
So like the applications are due at the end of April? If they're not 65 by April, they can't apply for this year? Or they can apply as long as they turn 65 in this year?
Right. What it does is when they turn, they come in and then we will adjust their taxes for that current year.
But they still have to have the application there by the end of April?
No, as soon as they turn 65, they can come in. And actually, if they missed, you know, say they're 67, we can go back two years and it'll freeze at that rate when they did turn 65. But only two years. If it goes past that, we can only go back two years. So it does give them some time to play catch-up if they miss, not knowing that they were able to have that exemption.
And that is only school taxes?
Yes, that is just the school taxes.
So their voting bridge and their ESD?
All of that, it can go up, right, it doesn't freeze. The county has initiated a new freeze this year on the general fund, but that's it. And we have one city that has a freeze, but the other cities just grant exemptions with no freeze.
They told you two minutes?
It's always better to hear from you than us telling them. Don't let me mess it up. Mr. Robert Tiarina has come to give us a little bit more information about the funding of a bond and our cash defecence.
A good evening, I'm Dr. Gignan, for the record, school district's financial advisor. And as Dr. Granjeen stated, this is the bond election, of course, for May the 6th. But to kind of give you a perspective and some history, this, I think if I'm correct, over the last 15 years, this is the third bond election that the school board has called. Back on May the 10th, 2008, the district called a bond election for $6.5 million and it passed. Now, the tax rate at that time, the total tax rate at the time was $1.23. M&amp;O and INS. When the bond election passed, going into fiscal year 2009, the tax rate went up about six cents to just about almost $1.29. So just a little over $1.29. So again, the bond election for $6.5 million was called. It passed on May the 10th, 2008. Tax rate increased and again from $1.23 to roughly $1.29. A few years later, the school board called another bond election. And again, a lot of work went into that. It was a few years before we called the one in 2008, a couple of years working on that. And again, shortly after 2008, we started working on the next bond election in 2010. There was two propositions, one for $7 million and another for $1,780,000. They called the bond election and it passed on May the 8th, 2010. So the tax rate went up from, I mean, went from $1.29 to roughly $1.38 and change. The $7 million proposition was for new construction and some renovations to the school district facilities. And the $1,780,000 was moving over maintenance and operation debt over to the INS tax rate side. So both of those required a tax rate increase of roughly 8.3 cents. So the reason I state those two prior bond elections, both of them together totaled 14 and a half cents. And for new money, a total of about $15 million. This bond election that was called for May the 6th is $32.2 million. And the tax rate increase that we're seeing is roughly about 18 pennies, 18 cents. And again, back then, years ago, 15 years ago, the total tax rate after that first bond election passed was $1.29. Currently, the total tax rate for this fiscal year is $1.09, roughly almost $1.0946. That's total maintenance and interest and sinking fund, both tax rates combined. And again, the reason I say that the state requires all school districts in Texas after fiscal year 2019, beginning in fiscal year 2020, every school district was required to pretty much compress, lower your maintenance and operation tax rate. So a combination of the state requiring your M&amp;O tax rate to drop, they made it, the districts lowered the tax rate and the state was going to kick in to school districts additional revenue because the districts lowered their M&amp;O tax rate. That was one factor. The other factor is the school district has become wealthier in the eyes of the state, meaning your property values have increased since 2008. So just currently, they're about $624.8 million. Back in 2008, I didn't have this on my notes, but back in 2008, the property values were $299.7 million. So you have become wealthier in the eyes of the state. So again, one penny generates about $60,000. So the tax rate increase is more than what we looked at combined on the prior two bond elections. Again, we're looking at 18 cents. So if this bond election passes, your total tax rate is going to go from roughly $1.09 to $1.2753, so roughly 18 cent increase. And as Dr. Granjeen stated, you know, we're looking at both the M&amp;O and the INS. Interest rates have increased since last March 2022. We all see this every day in the news. We see this in our savings accounts with the bank. Interest rates have gone up. Federal Reserve system has increased interest rates nine times over 400 basis points since last March 2022. The most recent interest rate increase by the Federal Reserve system was early February. I believe, early February of this year. There may be a couple of other ones sometime this summer. The next meeting is sometime in May. If things hold steady, there may be two more increases, possibly three between now and the end of the year. But we all know things change every day. I can't tell you what rates are going to be at tomorrow, much less the end of the year or even next year. But Dr. Granjeen had a bullet point on there. The cost of construction over the last few years has been going up. It's been increasing. And we had one client that had an elementary school sized up for about 900 kids for $43 million last year. The bond election didn't pass, but that same school, elementary school for 900 kids this year cost almost $10 million more, $53 million. The same facility. Nothing changed other than a year later. So again, we're seeing with other architects and construction managers, 20% or more cost increase. Interest rates have gone up. But during the last four years, again, we're seeing interest rates go up mainly the past 12 months. But the district has taken advantage of opportunities to save the taxpayers some money, try to keep the tax rate down. They did a refunding, a refinancing back in 2020. We refinanced about $1,730,000 of existing debt. We took an interest rate of 4.16, refinanced that to an interest rate of 2.35%. That savings produced about $164,000. The last three years, the district has done The last three years, the district has done cash defeesence, and we're able to levy the INS tax rate, generate extra income, and they've been able to pay off, not refinance, pay off one million three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of the existing debt, and save the taxpayers three hundred, almost three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars by doing that. And again, that's been the last three years, and it's ever since, as Dr. Grandjean stated, when the bond elections dialogue started happening. What could we do to help the community, either remove some debt from the district's name, pay off some debt, do some refinancing opportunities? And this is one of the best opportunities to go out and call a bond election. Last year, let's see, two hundred, no, a hundred and ninety-eight school districts called a record bond election in two thousand twenty-two for May and November. Thirty-two point one billion dollars worth of school bond elections were costing, called in calendar year two thousand twenty-two. Seventy percent of those bonds passed. And again, that was a hundred and ninety-eight school districts. This year, just for May alone, two hundred and twenty-six school districts called already for twenty-four point eight billion of bond elections for this May. So again, last year, people have been talking about having bond elections the last few years. Was the timing right last year, or was it this year? There's never really a good time, but we feel this is the best time to do it now. As again, Dr. Grandjean stated, the legislate, legislators are considering, to put it bluntly, what could we do to make it harder for bond elections to pass? Now they're talking about, let's have school districts only call bond elections in November, not in May. That's one, that one scenario that could change. The other that could change is if we do have school districts call bond elections in November, then they're requiring two-thirds of voter approval for a bond election to pass. So instead of fifty-one percent bond election passes, they're requiring two-thirds, sixty-six percent, to have a successful bond election pass. So again, we're all up against, again, we don't know what's going to pass through the legislators, what's going to happen this session until sometime mid-May, late May, well after the bond election. But again, you know, the district has done a great job trying to save the taxpayers' money, paying off debt, refinancing debt over the last three or four years. And again, we know interest rates are increasing, we don't know what's going to happen next year, but if, if you see a continuation of banks that are starting to fail, the crisis a few weeks ago with two banks, one in California, and there was another one, can't remember the name, we don't think it's going to be a continuation, more banks failing, but if that does occur, we think that the Federal Reserve system may hold off on increasing interest rates, and depending what happens, more banks fail, interest rates could start coming back down, latter part of this year or possibly next year. We don't see that happening right now. The pressure is interest rates to continue to go up, mid to the latter part of this year, continuation maybe into next year. I know that's a lot of information, but I just wanted to cover, again, just the savings, the refundings, the savings, the prior bond elections that were approved by the board and the community, the tax rate increase needed for those two bond elections. Again, fourteen cents for roughly fifteen million, we're looking at roughly eighteen cents for thirty-two point two million. Any questions from the audience? I appreciate y'all being here. I know there's probably a lot of other things to do, but we appreciate y'all being here. Hopefully, this is a positive meeting, turn around and tell five, ten other people all the, the facts, and they can make a sound decision, early election or early voting or the day of the election.
So does anybody have any questions for any of us? Other than that, it's the end of the meeting. Appreciate everybody coming. As you say, it's a good crowd.